Gang's all here? Let's get her started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 3rd City Council Meeting, City of Las Vegas. We will begin with an invocation by Pastor Jose Chavez from Our Father's House.
Good evening. Along with me, I brought our band of brothers. These men are always praying over you, over our city, and they're heavily involved in the community. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this evening. Let your kingdom come, let your will be done. Forgive us of our trespasses, for following our own ways and not leaning on you. We ask, Father God, that you bless this evening. We ask and we pray over these leaders that you appointed in our city, in our council, with our police department, with our fire department, our school boards, our business owners, and the residents of this city. Lord, we lift up this agenda tonight to your courts, and we ask that you would release your wisdom, your discernment, and your understanding into the decisions that are need to be made tonight. Lord, give us an ear to listen to your voice obediently, that we would do all that you command us to do, that the city of Los Baños would be known for having a reverence to your name. We ask that you would open up the treasures of heaven, that you would bring rain to our land, that you would bless our city, bless our labor, bless our coming, bless our going, bless the people of Los Baños. I pray that we would be the head and not the tail, that Los Baños would be a bubbling spring of your living water, where many would come and see and taste that you are good. We pray this in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you very much. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:02, and we will ask Police Commander Reyna to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commander. Roll call, Ms. Maloney.
Jones, Lambert, Lewis, Juanos, Correa.
Here. We have a quorum. Item four, consideration approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Lewis, and a second by Mayor Portem Lambert to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. Now go to presentations. The first one is for retirement of Los Angeles Fire Engineer Joshua Hatakeimer, and I understand that Josh is not here tonight, and accepting for him will be the Los Angeles Fire Association President Juan Ramirez. So... Better keep the glasses, I gotta read this thing. All right. Mr. Ramirez, thank you for coming. We have a whole bunch of your colleagues here to support your reception here for Josh. Those of you that know Josh, he served this city many years with dignity and with respect, and went far beyond his regular job to do, anytime there was a call of duty for something, for civic events, he was there. And so, and anyone who retires from the city of Las Vegas, we make sure that we recognize their hard work, and so here is a proclamation recognizing his retirement. Whereas Joshua Hatakeimer became a member of the Los Angeles Fire Volunteer Fire Department on June 4th, 2001, and whereas Joshua Hatakeimer was hired as a full-time firefighter by the city of Los Angeles on July 1st, 2006, and was promoted to the rank of Fire Engineer on January 16th, 2018, whereas Joshua Hatakeimer has contributed tremendously throughout his career to the community of Las Vegas through his knowledge and commitment to his job, and whereas Joshua Hatakeimer retired from the city of Las Vegas as Fire Engineer on June 1st, 2022, with nearly 16 years of service as a full-time city employee. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Las Vegas do hereby commend Joshua Hatakeimer on his dedication and loyalty to the city of Las Vegas and congratulate him on his retirement. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation was presented to Juan Ramirez in honor of Joshua Hatakeimer's stead at the City Council Meeting on August 3rd, 2022. Have a round of applause now for...
Yeah, I'll say a few words on behalf of Josh. Josh is a great friend of mine and everybody in the department. He was a great firefighter as well. I know if he could, and if he had the opportunity to do it all over again, he would. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Fire Team, thank you for keeping us safe. The rest of the world runs away from the fires. Fire Team runs at them. Stay safe, stay well, and thanks for coming. Now, our next proclamation is for Los Angeles Little League. Could I have the coaches? I see the team is here. Let's get the coaches and the team and everybody down here if we can. It's not a proclamation, it's a certificate. Ryan. Frank. Rob. Team. Gentlemen. All boys, right? Please. Go ahead and come on over here, you have plenty of room there for your whole team to spread across. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Missing one, very good. So you play nine and F3? Okay. Very good. I had a different kind of a Little League. We had Pee Wee League in Tracy, it was a city-run program, and we used to run a 10-man. We had a roving shortstop back in the day. But I can't tell you how much fun I had playing, even though I wasn't very good. But I enjoyed doing it as poorly as I was, as poorly as I did. It's such a great honor to see you here tonight, Las Vegas on your jerseys, and you've represented this city with integrity, pride, and skill. The certificate of recognition is presented to the 12-year-old's All-Stars team, Los Angeles Little League. Now that means you're the champions, right? The champions. You've got to remember that all your lives. You will remember this team and these coaches your whole life. You will never forget it, and you will look back on it with fond memories, and it will continue to inspire you, and hopefully it will inspire you to go on and do the same with other young people when you get older. Coaches, would you like to say a few words? They're not on the field, they don't know what to say. All right, so who's... Let's see, Coach, Head Coach, if you would come down and I'll present this to you. Thank you. Congratulations. Coaches? Congratulations. Congratulations. Not many people. Only one team goes away at the end of a season happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Celebrate the good stuff. At this point, now we'll go to item six, the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted at the City Council Chamber informational table. So come on up, and I was gonna say, come forward if you want to speak, but obviously we're already there. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Richard, Treasurer of the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. This is our Executive Director, Michelle, and we have a special guest we brought with us tonight, Tommy Tomato. So we have a little message for you from the chamber. And Tommy's a little bashful, you can see he's turning red right now, and I think Michelle has told me that's because it's getting near tomato season, so don't mind him, he'll speak up when there's time. Well, we'll try to encourage him. But Tommy did want us to say some tomato facts. Eighty percent of the tomatoes produced are freshly consumed. The remaining 20% are employed in the tomato processing industry. This includes soups, tomato ketchup, juices, and sauces. The global tomato processing market reached a volume of 43.4 million tons in 2021. Key companies in the global tomato processing market include the Morningstar Company, Ingamar Packing Company, and Kagami Company Limited. Now, 905 million was the 2NE21 tomato production value for processed tomatoes in the United States. The three topmost producers of tomatoes in the United States are Indiana, Florida, and California. Florida and California account for two-thirds of the national fresh tomato production, and California alone accounts for roughly 95% of the production of tomatoes that are processed. Finally, in 2021, California produced around 224 million hundredweight of fresh market tomatoes. And our first question everybody's gonna ask is, what's a hundredweight? That's the equivalent of 100weight equals 100 pounds. So it gives you an idea, it's a lot of tomatoes. Now, Tommy, well, what else? Fine, I'll interrupt him. Tommy wanted me to show everybody that coming this week, on Saturday, is the Tomato Festival. The last time we had the Tomato Festival was in 2019. Tommy, you don't want to hold it, we'll let Michelle hold it. Okay, that's gonna be 8:30 to 3 o'clock. Now what we're gonna do is we're gonna refer to this as the Tomato Festival Light. It's a reintroduction to the Tomato Festival that we haven't had since 2019. What we're gonna do is we're gonna have it for us on I Street. We're gonna have about 40 vendors. We will have some live entertainment. We are gonna try to do our Little Miss Tomato Pageant. I don't know about Little Mister, but I think at least Little Miss, and that's gonna be helped out with Dance Explosion. So we're gonna have some of our local businesses and vendors help us with participating in the event for us. We're obviously still accepting any applications of anyone who wants to participate at the event, and we're at least 40 strong right now. So considering we haven't had a Tomato Festival since 2019, we think this is a real good showing. Is that right, Tommy? Yes, everyone? Okay, well, obviously I'm not a very good ventriloquist, but the idea is we want to let everybody know that the Tomato Festival's coming back this year, and we're hoping to have a good success with it and a good turnout. And again, it's a community event, and next year Tomato Festival 23 will be the big event. So this is a reintroduction. Anything else? I think we're good. Thank you, everyone. Come on, Tommy, let's go.
Thanks for coming, Tommy.
Hello, my name is Domingo Sandoval. I'm one of the directors for the Chamber of Commerce, so I want to invite you guys to be, help you support for the Tomato Festival. So this one is gonna be a little different. This is gonna be more family-oriented. So I was bringing the local people, they want to sell us over there in the corner, they want to have permits and everything to bring it in, to make our community, our local business, get in more business. What I was gonna do more is kind of bring our local talents. So I'm bringing my, our local folklorico dancers, our local Aztec dancers. I was gonna have our local ranchers coming in and do some tricks with the thing. So I tried to make it more, the family can come with the kids and have a good moment, and actually I want you, you got the support to help us out, to make more better things for the community. I'm a very family-oriented person. My family is everything for me, and that's what I try. I love this town. I call it my home, I call it my home, because I care. I care for all these people here, and I care for the people that's in the corner, and I care for everybody. And I wanted your support to make me, make it, bring more things to my community. And that's what I'm gonna say, you know, I'm only asking you for your support in the Tomato Festival and the more events coming in the future, to make this community the greatest, Los Banos. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Amy Benias. I live, work, and raise a family in Los Banos. I am here today to be a voice and advocate for those experiencing homelessness in our small city. First, I would like to say thank you to the city of Los Angeles for allowing a vulnerable segment of our population to have a space they call their own. Although not ideal, the homeless containment area is helpful to cluster individuals experiencing homelessness together as their own community within a community. It gives these people a sense of comfort and belonging to live amongst each other in their own designated space. This area allows code enforcement, city and county outreach workers, as well as nurses within a mobile medical team to access individuals in a timely and systematic way. Second, I would like to address why I'm here. After watching the July 20th City Council Meeting on YouTube and seeing resident after resident come to the podium and complain about those living in the containment area, I knew I had to speak out. I fear that the entitled "not in my backyard" attitudes, as well as the misinformation with lack of research, over-exaggerations, and flat-out mean-spirited comments will persuade the council to shut down and remove the containment area. This cannot happen. Not only will it create mistrust for those living, I'm sorry, for those having to evict our community members, but it will generate more problems with no positive answers or results. Last, I would like to talk about possible solutions. One solution would be for us to do nothing. We keep the containment area as is and hope to continue to facilitate ways to make it better. A second solution could be to follow in the footsteps of places like Modesto and Sacramento. In 2019, Modesto allowed Mo's, the Modesto Outdoor Emergency Shelter, to operate a tent city under the Ninth Street Bridge. Throughout the course of Mo's lifespan, Stanislaus County was able to provide uniformed tents to over 700 occupants, which resulted in 25 families to homes and 3,100 services dealing with case management, homeless court, substance abuse, youth services, and mental health. According to Modesto spokesperson Thomas Reeves, Modesto saw a crime reduction, specifically with calls for service from police and ambulances. And in Sacramento, it was just announced last week that rows of tiny houses were being assembled to be used to shelter people experiencing homelessness in the county. My third and final solution would be that Los Angeles build homes for those in need. We are a society that keeps trying to solve homelessness with everything other than homes. It's like believing that food doesn't solve hunger. In closing, I would like to say that the failure to provide even minimal comfort for those among us suffering from trauma, disability, sickness, and misfortune represents a failure not just of responsible government, but also of the human heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Shandra Lewis. I am a resident of Los Angeles at Rancho, Los Angeles Mobile Home Park. Thank you for letting me speak, Mayor and Council. I have been here every two weeks, the first and the third, to let you know how our situation is. If you don't live there, you don't know. Just like the people say, if you don't know what the homeless is like, you don't know. You're speaking differently. Well, I know what it is to have them as neighbors. They do not respect us. They don't respect what the city has done for them. The city made a containment for them with paved area to go down through there to get to them more accessibly. They have trashed that. They are not able to get in there with their vehicles to get to them quickly. They have torn up the fence that the containment area is, and they have tore up our fence, and the city has had to replace it twice already. They have, we have them on camera from our citizens in our community, and we report that to the police department. If that is an exaggeration, then they should not be in our park if it's an exaggeration. They should not be stealing our lawn mowers, our weed eaters, our recyclables. It is okay to help them. It is not okay for them to have a pass because they're homeless to terrorize us, and they have terrorized us. Our elderly people are afraid to go outside because there's needles on the ground, which we have never had before. They have dug out from under our fence, so now they crawl under it. We would like them to stay on their side and live peaceably with us, but they do not choose to live peaceably with us. That is why we're asking for help. It is not an exaggeration. We have had homeless come in and pass out from over drug use, and this was been said a long time ago, and I wasn't going to say much tonight, but there you go. I mean, we are the citizens that are living next to the homeless. We're experiencing it. It's easy to say it's good to give them a handout and to help them, and all these agencies have been out there to help them. If they took the help, they would not be there. Because I know that Bethel goes out there, and there's the homeless connect, but they're still there. And I know there's a long process, and we are probably very impatient, but I have several tenants very angry with me because we will not provide... But I have several tenants very angry with me because we will not provide security. And the police department is there every night. They can't be there twenty-four hours a day, every moment. And they know when you're there and when they're not. But we do have them on camera. We just sent them to, to the chief recently with a man.
One minute.
Thank you. Removing, uh, a lawnmower and going through places. So yes, we are being threatened, and yes, if it's an exaggeration, I apologize. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Anna McCauley, Los Banos resident. I wanna re, uh, just take a moment and address what the lady who's at the, um, RV Park said, or Mobile Home Park, and the other lady that had suggestions. I think there's something there to work with, so hopefully we see something moving. I can only, can't imagine what horror this is. Good evening. This council has far more weighty issues in considering who the next city manager will be. More weighty issues than maybe ever before. Your action to fire the last city manager has made this citizenry in this town more enraged, more engaged, and more livid than ever, probably more than any other issue in recent years. Yes, this population is livid. I think you'd be surprised how many people, uh, if your name is on the ballot, you won't be, you, you won't be, uh, you might not be around for the next one. We all knew why, what caused the city manager to fire, uh, the other city manager near the end of his term. So much for the Brown Act. People knew it, what, where he left. Unlike people who felt enraged, who had felt engaged with Josh Panero, he talked with them, he was accessible. There were people that, um, Alex wouldn't even talk to. He just did nothing, but he collected a check all along. And that continued to infuriate departments because he did nothing. The more I thought about Josh's firing, and I've talked to different people, you know, even on this, uh, the city council, I know you can't talk about it, but the more I got to thinking about it, I can't help but believe that it all boiled down to personalities and not job performance. Now, anybody can lie with a straight face and say, oh, no, he was really bad to us. But anyway, why do I say that? Because two who voted not to fire said there were no grounds for it. If there were any grounds for it, even if they didn't agree to fire him, they would have at least said there were some grounds, but maybe not enough. So then I could see it as having nothing to do, nothing else but personalities and not to do with performance. The two council members said no grounds. I rest my thoughts. Thanks to former Mayor Volalto, you folks got off with a simple majority vote. Yes, he made that change during his mayorship to a simple majority to just fire somebody. A vote dealing with the city manager from here on out needs to be a four to one or a five to nothing vote. There's gotta be a lot more spine to this. Anything less is just window dressing. And this is shameful and needs to change. We'll see if you do it. It's time when any of you leave your posts and perhaps leave town too, that you stop chiming in with anybody on this dais. Too much of that has been going on. It's known around town. It's cheap and disgusting. Leave those who run this town to run this town. And anybody who's out of town at this point, maybe held a position here, you know, just cut them off at, at the pass. This is nonsense. Shame on any of you who allow this to happen, that you have given them your, your, your time and your space to take any advice from them. It shows your own lack of spine and decision-making when you're still listening to somebody else. One more thing. Anyone who doesn't have time to return a phone call or answer a message, you don't deserve another day on this council. I can say most of you have, uh, have been good with, uh, conversing. I'll leave it at that. We've all had our fill of years-long politicians hired into the city manager position. But we know why you've done it, because there's a common kinship with your preference. They already have your mindset. They're politicians. It's been, it's one thing to have three to five years' experience in government. And I've been there. But gee whiz, do they need more than five years to understand, have some understanding of government? I don't think so. The public needs to hear about your choices before you pick one. You've got our attention now. This won't be an easy decision because you know we're watching and we're listening. When it comes to the next election, and I say this to all voters out there, don't vote for anyone in any position who's been around too long. Leave it blank, even if there's no competition. We need to clean house.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Johnny Martinez. I've been a resident here in Los Banos for fifty-nine years. My father, Armando Martinez, is, uh, couldn't come here today. He's, he's, uh, sick. He's eighty-seven, gonna be eighty-eight years old. Back in two thousand twenty, on Mother's Day, I was shot here in Los Banos, at my shop right there, by a random shooter that was airlifted to Modesto. And, uh, I don't, I stayed at our shop because our shop was, uh, being vandalized by, by, uh, we're at the corner of Santa Redundee. We've been there for over fifty years. My dad's been at the house where he lives at now, as he resides now at eight twenty-nine D Street. He's been there for sixty-seven years. And, uh, we, we have a lot of trouble with the homeless there. I've talked to Breezy. Thank God that he's, he's been helping me with this. Uh, I've, I've talked to dispatch, uh, and, uh, they always tell me they're gonna put me on the board, and we're gonna send a police officer out, but they never come out. I says, have them call me, uh, so I can come outside, so I can talk to them. I had to move in there. I've been there for two years trying to get the homeless out of the shop. And, um, I, I had a little trouble with dispatch. One year, I talked to, um, Mr. Reyno over here about an incident that happened. My mom was sick, um, and she wanted me to stay, she put a stay away, wanted me to stay away order, you know, from the house, you know? And, uh, she was ill. And, uh, it was no violence, something like that. It was just, uh, my mom just didn't want me at the house. But anyway, I was moving. My dad told me to come and get the pickup and trailer to move to Fresno. And, uh, uh, I, uh, uh, I said, Dad, I can't, Mom put a restraining order, you know? I, I'm not supposed to talk to you? He goes, no, let me talk to the police department. So he called and asked, told them that if it was okay, but, you know, Johnny comes to get the pickup and trailer. So, uh, uh, they said, yeah, it's okay. And so, uh, I says, Dad, I'm gonna call and confirm it. So I did call, and they said, Johnny, are you gonna go get the pickup by now? I go, yeah. And then, um, I'm gonna go right now. Call us when you get there. So when I got there, they said, Johnny, um, uh, you're, um, you know better. You're, uh, what do you, I forgot the word. They came and arrested me after they gave me permission, and my father. And then I talked to Mr. Reyno about it, and he says, uh, that I don't think I would say that. Well, talk to my father. They even told him it was okay for me to go down there. But I've been getting this from the Los Banos Police Department. I've been getting a lot of, like, yes, uh, yesterday morning, I called, uh, for them, they, um, uh, because it was a truck that was parking right next door to my dad's. And a man is kinda hard to deal with. So, um, I called the police department, and it's, because he goes early in the morning, wakes my dad up. My dad's been ill. He's been in the hospital. And, uh, I, I told him I wanted, uh, they, they went out several times. They said, well, we can't talk to him. He, he's done, he could, he can, he can park in the residential street. He's, he's up in the driveway. Okay. So, um, I told dispatch if I can talk to, uh, Sergeant. And they said, Johnny, we're not putting you through to the sergeant. And I says, why not? And they started giggling and laughing, and then she hung up the phone on me. I says, I called her back. I says, hey, we're on a recorder line. Besides that, I've been recording you. And, um, I, I'm gonna go to one of the city meetings and talk to you about this, talk to, talk about this. And, uh, they said, I don't care if you go. That's what they told me. Breezy, I told Breezy about this, what's been going on, uh, uh, that my father's been, been woken up by this one truck. So he took care of it this morning. They, uh, went and told the driver, uh, we didn't want him, he's just hard to deal with. We, we don't, we didn't wanna deal with them.
One minute, sir.
So, what's that?
One minute.
Okay. So all, all we're asking is for the police department to be a little bit more fair with us and not to be like that when we, you have officers, they go over there, they drive right by. They don't get out their car and walk, because a lot of the homeless are, are at the lumberyard right across the street from us. So there's lumber. They jump the fence at night, and they, uh, they throw rocks at our dog, my dogs, and they shoot BB guns at my dog. They've been treating us, uh, I, I've talked to the owners over there. They never paid, they never pay attention to us. So I called the police department, and they just drive right by. They don't get out their car, and they don't go over there and go look. So, uh, I just wish that they would, wouldn't treat us like this. We've been here forever. So, you know, my dad's sick, uh, and my dad, the day that they arrested me at the shop, and they told me, oh, you're violated, after they gave my dad permission and they gave me permission. So I don't think that that's fair, how the police department's treating us. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come speak? Public forum. Seeing no one, we will close the public forum.
Mr. Mayor, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget about that. Ms., Ms. Malley?
Hi, my name is Lori Thomas. I am the property manager at the Pacheco Court Apartments. As a resident of Los Banos for over twenty-six years, I was very pleased to know Josh Panero was the city manager for a town that needed a lot of help. I have been struggling with the homeless since March twenty-twenty at my site. The trespassing has become a problem for my residents and became a matter in question for them. I have received numerous complaints from residents regarding their belongings stolen from their patio or front porch. It had went as far as to resident, residents' vehicles being stolen off the property and broken into. I am constantly asking the homeless to leave our trash and recycle enclosures as well. I have had my laundry room vandalized three times. The first time, we had our quarters robbed. Second time, residents' clothes were stolen. And the third time, my screen windows were torn off and water faucet damaged. The homeless also began using the property outlets for electricity. I found one of our light posts tampered with. An electric wire was connected to it and pulled out of their tent area, along with a PVC pipe connected to one of our water lines. We had our backflows repaired several times due to the homeless breaking the locks to turn the water on. We have found urine and feces in the laundry room and under the staircase and much more. It wasn't long after Josh Panero started working as the city manager that I started to notice a big improvement on how clean the homeless camp area was becoming. Residents and I had begun to feel a big relief off our shoulders. He was working on cleaning up and managing the homeless situation. The fear of coming outside with our children began to subside until you three, Refugio Lomus, Tommy Furia, and Deborah Lewis voted to terminate Josh. The worries and concerns to residents that live in these one hundred and eighty-five units of apartments started to come back again. Out of my twelve years working at the Pacheco Court Apartments, I have never seen a city manager care for the people as much as Josh did. He cared, he loved Los Banos, and wanted a safer place for us all. I feel you three that voted Josh out need to resign and bring Josh back. At least Josh would visit the businesses of this city and actually walk and visit the homeless encampment. Josh showed that he would lead by example and cared for the people of Los Banos. I found Josh to be very honest, reliable, and proactive. I am very disappointed in your decision, and I can say Los Banos will not be the same because you lost a great city manager. Signed, Lori Tom, Thomas. Toms, Thomas. I have an email from Maria Fatima Saquera, the assessor at CCID. Good evening. I am forwarding a letter that CCID sent last week to Planning Commission. It's regarding item twelve on page one ninety-one of tonight's council meeting package. We know it's only informational item only. However, CCID wants to make sure that the City of Los Banos is aware that APN four-three-zero-dash-zero-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-four is in CCID district boundary, and it has not been detached. From what we see, it's not in the City of Los Banos. We just want to make sure that the city is aware that when parcel zero-zero-four is considered commercial and no longer be farmed, it needs to be detached from CCID. Do I need to read the forwarded email, Stacy?
Pardon me?
Unless the city attorney believes that we do, but it's really under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and would be read at their public hearing.
I can read it if you'd like me to.
Uh, go ahead and read it, since it's been sent in.
This email is in responding to item nine on your Planning Commission agenda for this week meeting. Splitting APN four-three-zero-dash-zero-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-four into two different parcels. CCID doesn't have a problem with the split. However, we would like to inform the city that this parcel is still in Central California Irrigation District boundary and has not been detached from what we see. It's not in the City of Los Banos. I have also noticed that it shows to be nine-point-nine-seven acres. According to Merced APN map, it shows to be nine-point-six acres. I recall many years ago that the east, that the area east of this parcel was detached from CCID and brought into the city. I am enclosing for your reference Merced County Parcel Map four-three-zero-dash-zero-one for your information. The solid blue line is CCID district boundary. The parcels in solid red are in district parcels within the district water rights. Parcel forty was previously in district and was detached, but can still receive Class Two water from CCID when it's available. Please note that for parcel zero-zero-four, to be considered a commercial, to be considered commercial and no longer be farmed, it needs to be detached from CCID. We need to make sure this gets done, as there are still several instances of previous projects in the City of Los Banos that never got detached from CCID. And now it's both in the city and in CCID, which is against Lafco regulations and needs to be addressed as Lafco does not permit land to reside in multiple special, multiple special districts. Before we can accept this project, we are asking the City of Los Banos to detach the above-mentioned parcel and any other CCID parcel islands within the city. Additionally, please be aware that development cannot impact the level of service for drainage from the agricultural lands to the west of parcel four, which currently drain through parcels four-through-forty. And it's signed Maria Fatima Saquera, the assessor at CCID. And those are the only two items I received.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to item seven, consideration of approval consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. Ms. Malley?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Number two-three-four-zero-nine-zero through two-three-four-two-five-three in the amount of one million seven-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Minutes for the July sixth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. Minutes for the July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two adjourned city council meeting. City Council Resolution number six-five-two-nine. Reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB three-sixty-one. City Council Resolution number six-five-three-zero. Approving First Amendment to Compensation Agreement pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section three-four-one-eight-zero-F for the Los Banos Successor Agency Transfer of properties to City of Los Banos for governmental use and future redevelopment activity. City Council Resolution number six-five-three-one. Authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment number two to the Professional Services Agreement with Mark Thomas and Company, Inc. for engineering services for the Pioneer Road Widening Project. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Any council members wish to remove any items for discussion or separate vote? Seeing none, Chair entertain a motion to approve. vote? Seeing none, Chair entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as ready.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Protim Lambert and second by Councilmember Jones to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item eight, city council member request regarding an overview of the Los Angeles Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, LBDPBID, financials, from Councilmember Lewis, and this is being handled by interim Finance Director, Mr. Kuhn.
Good evening, City Council. I was tasked with reviewing the PBID in regards to their financial activity and also reviewed all of the health, I mean, Street and Highways Code. I reviewed the agreements between the city and the PBID, and I also reviewed PBID law in relation to how the annual report is filed. I believe that there was a discussion last time, I was, I was not here during that time, that there was a need to get clarification for the budget and budgetary purposes and, and I think expenditures, expenditures in general, I think an itemized budget was, was, was requested. I have gone through this extensively and working with the accountant there. I also was working with Civitas this week to, to gain an understanding as to how they perceived the reporting to happen. I looked at fiscal year, well, their, their understanding was that the fiscal year was a calendar year end. So I looked, I looked at their financial statements in general ledger based upon a calendar year end for, for 2020 and 2021. As I went through this report, I found that the initial reporting, the first annual report that was due, is due after the first year of assessments or the first year of operations. It's ambiguous as to how a full year or if it's just within that calendar year. What we found is that the, the way the assessor receives assessments and then remits assessments doesn't correlate very well with a calendar year end. They, they receive all of these. In fact, we just had to submit all of our assessments to the county assessor. We did that today, but it's due by the 12th. So, and then they take that and, and then it's remitted in December and I believe in April, June, or April.
Get them January and then yeah?
Yes. So they remit those in there, but we receive them in January and June. So in discussion with, with the accountant, in fact, that was ongoing today, we just, we made the decision to change their fiscal year requirements to, to mirror the government fiscal year, so July through June. And the annual report is a prospective report. So in that report, it is supposed to identify all of the things that will be done in the next year. So as part of this review, I looked at their management, the, the district management plan, and that, that is, is produced in a five-year basis, and it was done in 2019. It's based upon engineering reports, it's based upon specific need, general need, who gets benefit within this district or even on the periphery of this district. So as I was going through this, I noted that the first annual report was missing. And so it was difficult to, to determine, based on this calendar year requirement, whether or not there's been adherence to the budget maximum. So the, the, the budget is, is separated in four kind of buckets, if you want to put, put it that way. There's, and I'll forward to, to, so there's maintenance and general security, there's marketing and placemaking, small infrastructure and operations. This has all been, been determined by the, the management district plan, and the only way that you can adjust these balances, these budgets, you can adjust them up to 10% in a category. So if you wanted to take 10% from operations and move it for, to small infrastructure for, for a given year because they have a, a large infrastructure project that they need extra funding on the assessment side, you can do that, but it has to be reported in the annual report to council. And so the timing of how the reports were being populated and how they were coming to council was kind of wonky in terms of, of being able to adhere to these budget maximums. So, in, I guess deference to Civitas, who's been putting these annual reports together, we, we had a conference call with them this week and, and walked through what we were finding. And they agreed to change their last, they, the way they were identifying the reports was, was not mirroring how the annual report was supposed to be identified. So it needs to have the year in which this is identified, and they were already into the 23 calendar year, but they were using information for, from like a calendar year end that's basically missing six months of assessments. So in the first year, if you looked at it from a calendar year end for 2020, they received one assessment. And so they were showing these expenditures based upon that, and there's no way that you could get to the budget maximums or the, or the budget allocations, which is about $36,000 per, per category, because it was only half of the assessment that they have received. So what we're doing is, is we're having them redo their books to reflect the, the fiscal year, so two full assessments, and then taking the expenses and, and seeing where they are in terms of, of what's being done there. The other thing that we found when we first looked at this was that the surplus that being reported in the annual plan because of the calendar year end, the fiscal year end change, they weren't mirroring what they were seeing in their actual financial statements. And the way they determined, and I think there's some miscommunication as to this, what the surplus is. I think their understanding was that there was a budget surplus, but that's not how the plan was developed. It's actual surplus, so revenues over expenditures. So each year, the net income or net deficit, if you will, that needs to get reported in the annual plan as to which bucket it's going to, to be applied and how, and how that, that cost is, is going to, to bring down that surplus. Similarly, if there was a deficit, you would have to take from one of the, the buckets to, to mitigate that deficit. The other issue was that they had some event monies, and these are non-assessment fundings, that were not recorded in the books of the PBID. They, they, I believe that there's, there's a relationship between the, the Owners' Association, who's the management, or the, you know, they're the governance of the PBID. And so they, I identified that in their general ledger, and they've now corrected that and are moving that within the, the books of the PBID. The, the reason why this is important is because non-assessment funding can only go to events or small infrastructure. So they can't use it for operations and they can't use it for, for the security, the, the other buckets. So if they're using that for the events, and the events are, and have been budgeted in one of the buckets, you most likely are going to have a surplus that, that will be, there'll be some planning in the budget for the previous year to maybe increase that bucket. That amount can only be increased by 10%. So they have to be wary of, of their, their surpluses and, and how the, how the budgetary adjustments are managed. So what we found is that we are not going to be able to give you an annual report that has the itemized budget that you wanted because of all of these things that we found during the, I've been working on this for about three weeks now. But the, the, the issue here is, is that the 2.5% increase that's baked into the engineering report and the management district plan, if, if it's not approved tonight, then the, we, the assessments have to go into the assessor's office, so it will go based upon the prior assessment without the 2.5. So that is, is where we are with this. It's, it's kind of a, a fluid situation because of, I think, the understanding of how the, the accounting was supposed to be done. It's not necessarily in terms of overspending in one and not the other. It's just that you can't have a full year of assessments and apply the expenditures to those budget categories properly without that fiscal year being July 1 to 630. It just can't be. You'll always be, so what will end up happening is, is if the horizon on this, if the sun sets out and, and, you know, on the calendar year, the, the district is done per the agreement, you, you, there'll still be an assessment hanging out there that won't be, be able to apply to anything. It'll probably have to be remitted back. So the action plan here is to work with Civitas to bring back an annual report that mirrors the activity that will be for this budget year, even, you know, from seven, one through 630. I believe that there's, there was some request to have some itemization of that budget, which Civitas is going to work on. This will not be brought forth to the council until September, September 21st council meeting. So again, you have a timing issue in terms of, we have to submit to the assessor's office by the 12th, and we're not going to have that annual report that you wanted until September. So I guess whatever questions you guys have in regards to what I found or how to proceed forward, that's, this is the best time to, to do that right now.
Before, before I go to council, Mr. Brett, the, if, if, if that 2.5 is not approved before the September deadline date, can it be approved after?
No, because it, because, because the, the deadline for the assessor's office is the 12th. That's the reason why, another reason why this annual report kind of has to be consistent with the city's budgetary practices, because all of this can be brought forward, and, and it's the same thing that we do with our assessment districts. You know, those are all approved through the budgetary process through, you know, the engineering reports and everything, and we, we submit that this week, in fact. So, no. You either are going to approve, approve that 2.5 or not, and it's, whatever you do tonight will be what's going to the assessor's office. The, the, the added information and the request to have an annual report is to comply with the management district plan and comply with the Streets and Highway Code. So that's still going to come no matter whatever your vote is on the 2.5%. It's just a reorganization of that report to mirror the financial information now that's changing since we're changing the fiscal year for the district.
So we're trying to square up, square up the reporting system.
Right.
So that everything works together.
Right.
So you don't have that offset between fiscal and, and, and calendar.
Right.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, Ms. Lewis, this was your item, so imagine you want to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the report and all the research that you did on this. The agenda item on April 21st that we received in regards to the report from the Downtown Association referred to their costs in the FY 2022. So I assume that this was regarding fiscal year, that they understood that.
Right, it wasn't. So, so again, you have, if, if I may, you have that report that it, it's a prospective report, so it's, it's basically meant to be a budgetary document. It's not a retrospective report like, like a, a financial statement has. The financial statements are there for the purpose of identifying the surplus within the district. And that surplus and those, that monies are plugged into this document so that going forward, you have an action plan as to how to spend that surplus or mitigate the deficit, whatever, whichever way the, the income statement leans. And it also is a time period where you get to see how they're budgeting based, or any departures of budgeting from, from the, the original MDP. So if they're going to do a 5% from operations to security, or if they're going to do a full 10% from one to the other. So at that point, that's where the council can modify, you can accept what they're saying they're going to do in the district, or you can modify it however you think. So you may say, no, well, I think this needs to have more, more, more items. So the annual report is an important tool going forward into the next year. The problem is, is, is the understanding of, of how the accounting happened, I believe, didn't take into, into account how governments assess and receive assessments. Does that make sense?
So are you saying that Civitas is the one that did the accounting for them?
No, they do not. They, what they do is, is they get the accounting from an accountant in Turlock, and they take that information and, and put that into your annual report. So they're the consultants for the annual report, and they're the ones that are going to redo this annual report and to tighten it up based upon the financial informations that, that's being redone currently. I just, just before I got here, Lori is the accountant there. She just sent the 20, 2020, 2021 fiscal year to, to show that. So she's working on, on the next one. And these were all kind of recommendations from, from finance, from me personally, to, to tighten this up based upon how the activity flows into the district. So.
So, so these are my concerns. We have, you know, $30,000 that was spent on the Christmas event, $10,000 on the Fourth of July event. And after speaking with you, I understand that monies that are collected in tax can be spent on those events, but from what I think I understood, they have to be in certain categories.
Right.
So, but let me finish.
Okay.
So the report that is given to us, it's very generalized, and, and there's just like a stack of money in different categories, but there's nothing specific about the, the tax money, the public money that's collected for this organization and how that portion is spent. And that, that's where, you know, I'm having some issue is not the 501(c)(1) portion.
Can I, can I make a clarification on what you mean by public funds? Because for me, public funds are assessments. So are you talking about non-assessment funding? So, so, so the categories here are, you have assessment funding and you have non-assessment funding.
So I guess that would be the assessment funding, which is collected from property owners and from the City of Los Angeles.
Right.
Okay. So that's, that's the portion I'm talking about.
Okay.
That in this report, I cannot figure out in the assessment portion, how money was divvied up in any kind of fiscal year.
All they're, all they're saying is, is that's all just assessment money. That, that was one of the findings that I had, is what non-assessment funding is coming in and how is it being spent? And, and so the non, the, the non-assessment funding, so the donations or things that don't roll through the rolls and come through Merced and, and Los Angeles City, those can only be for events and small infrastructure. So they have to identify how that money is being spent in the next year, right? So if they plan on doing a fundraiser for whatever purpose, they have to state what that's for, and they have to, to, to account for it that way. What you're seeing in there is basically what was approved in, in the district plan to manage this district, and it's basically, they're giving you the 25% that the engineering report at the very beginning stated that that's what, how the general and specific benefit will be derived within the district and the periphery of the district. So that's being spent predicated on those four categories. So it's, you have the operations, you have your, your maintenance and security, small infrastructure, and marketing. So that's, 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 that's built in as a maximum that you can, that you can do for that. All right?
So I'll, I'll give you a category. One is maintenance and general security, and it, it lists a whole, you know, myriad of things like pressure washing, litter removal, landscaping improvement, contracting private security patrol, and coordinating with the city. security patrol, and coordinating with the City of Los Banos with support for the organization. So I know our city has used our public works, our fire department, and our police department. And in general, in general, I'm saying, you are not supposed to give away as a donation public, what's the word I'm trying to find here? The use of public property as well as employee time. So I don't know. I know that they've worked events for them, and I have no idea, you know, what the city has been paid or if we've been paid anything for the services that have been rendered to them. And so within this category, I would like to see if the city has been paid anything for those services.
So what you're talking about is you're talking about a retrospective expenditure, financial, whatever the case. In terms of the streets and highway requirement, that's not a requirement. The requirement is that you have this district plan. They're going to tell you what they're spending within this district plan, but it's prospective. It's not, if you're looking at anything from that aspect, I think that has to be a request of the association for specific things. So when you start getting into reviews of expenditures and reviews of financial statements, I'm trying to limit the use of that annual report, because that annual report's not going to tell you that. It'll tell you if there was a surplus and then how that surplus is to be spent, but the annual report is what's brought to city council. And again, that's not a retrospective of, okay, this is what we did from a budget. Like, you're used to seeing budget actual stuff from the city, but that's not the way the annual report is structured. And that's per the code and per the law. So I'm trying to understand exactly, like, are you requesting that they?
Well, I'll just say it this way. We only have three organizations that we grandfathered in as far as what the city will do to help. No one else has grandfathered in. So if, I would hope that if there is a request for city services, that that is brought to the council, and we know what the dollar amount is before there's any approval, or we'll say, hey, we'll approve this dollar amount and limit it at that. So I, as a city council member, and in regards to money that the city pays into this assessment pot, we're the largest payer of assessment to this organization. So I think we and any other person, any other business is entitled to know what is being spent in, you know, in these pots of categories. So, you know, no other organization within the city can lend a helping hand in those areas, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but I think the taxpayers in the City of Los Banos for the money that the city dispenses needs to know exactly what's going out there, because we made it public about the other organizations, but this needs to be public as well, and no hidden expenses. So that's, you know, that's one of the things that I have concern about is I have no idea what those expenditures are in dollar amounts, and, you know, these are general breakdowns of the category. Every single pot has the same amount in it.
Right.
And if we are giving services out of a particular pot, then I'm just recommending that those requests come directly to council and that they not be done behind closed doors so that we don't know what monies are being spent.
Councilmember Lewis, if I may, just a clarification. If you may recall, the city council did approve the waiver for the 4th of July. I do believe that is in reference to the 4th of July event, because that would be the only event that I can think of that had public works, fire, police, services, and those departmental service fees were waived at the approval of the city council on a one-time basis.
And what I'm saying with that is that it's not just the waiver of the fees, but we need to know the dollar amount. There needs to be a dollar amount attached to that. And that's historically what happens here at council meetings. The staff will come and ask us to weigh something, and there's no dollar amount attached to it. And that's not, that's not right for the taxpayers of this city, and I think that needs to be a disclosure.
How, okay, so let me clarify. So you're asking to quantify what the cost to the city is for events?
What I'm saying is that if we are giving X amount of time for any particular department to give services, and we're not being paid for it, then the council needs to know what that dollar amount worth is for those departments that we're giving away.
Okay, so that would be, that would be a city produced.
It would need to come to council for approval. That's what I'm saying.
Any other questions? It's a little convoluted because of how the timing worked with this. And so, and we're still working with management and their accountant and the consultant to tighten up the whole thing, so.
Well, I can say I'm quite surprised that Civitas, being that, you know, this is a national organization that does this all the time, had not made it clear to them that they had to work on a fiscal year budget and not an annual budget. This is not the first rodeo for management to do this. You know, this has been done in another city before, so that city runs under the same state laws that the City of Los Banos does.
Right.
So I don't understand why they weren't aware of this. I don't understand that excuse. And I think that's all I have to say about this right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kuhn, now, as I was listening, is the Downtown Association required or not required to produce an itemized expenditure from the P-bid money? As far as their fundraising money and their own stuff, that's their business, but the P-bid money is.
What do you mean required to produce?
Oh, when they report their budget to us.
Right.
When they report their expenditures to us. Are we allowed to ask for an itemized budget, or are they not required to provide an itemized budget? Just a general.
It's not stated in there that it has to be itemized per the code, no. What it says is that if you're going to allocate any of those, that you, that has to be identified. Now, again, there's leeway in terms of modifying, I was going with two different things there, modifying the report that the council can request. And if the request is that you're modifying the report to bring an itemization of the budget, then that's something that can be done. I've expressed that to Civitas and to the accountant, that that was requested. So I'm assuming that in this annual report that is going to be submitted in September, that there'll be some itemization there. But again, we'll get clarification again with Civitas next week when I speak with them.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, regarding the $5,000 city contribution to the Downtown Association for the 4th of July event, was that $5,000 in a check to the Downtown Association, or was that in lieu of services as well?
It would, any of the stuff that was recorded by them would have been a check, not in lieu of services. So there's nothing, right?
Councilmember Lewis, or Jones, I'm sorry. Are you referring to the special event, the 4th of July?
Correct, yeah.
That had been in lieu, it'd been the departmental services that we provided in lieu to put on the event. So it wasn't an actual physical check, it was the services that we provided.
No, but I mean, are you talking about the non-assessment funding, or are you talking about something else?
The non-assessment funding.
So the non-assessment funding was cash money that came into the district? I saw the deposits.
So the $5,000 that the city approved as a waiver?
Is not included.
Is not included in that. But the way that that was allocated, was that just a check to the Downtown Association, or was that?
That's in lieu.
That was in lieu. So that covers police time, public works time, and everything else, right?
So it was quantified to be $6,500.
Okay.
And that was brought to the council. There was two meetings. The first meeting was to ask to put the 4th of July event as a event that would be waived for future events. And then we came back to the council and itemized each of the different special events that are waived, and we had set a cap at $6,500, because that was the most expensive event, which was Christmas, and we had set that cap, which the 4th of July was just right under that Christmas event, about $6,500 range.
Okay, thank you.
So to clarify, in terms of the cost to the district and the recording of that, they wouldn't necessarily then record that as an expense to them or as goodwill or as some intangible thing? So the way the district is set up is to receive money and spend money, and if there's a surplus of money, that surplus then gets identified in the next year. Does that clarify that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. A very detailed report. Want to know, at this point, are there any red flags, basically? Is there anything that we should be concerned about? Is there anything that's forecasted out that you would say, hey, we need to take a look at this? Or is it just a matter of the calendar, or the fiscal, or getting in line with the way we do our budget?
At this point, it's getting aligned, right?
Right.
Because in terms of the reporting to the council, it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not really sure that the city has that ability to opine on stuff of this nature. I think that that's more of something that would be the management of the P-bid, which is the association, that would have to deal with that. So their board governs that type of.
Yeah, I'm just more, again, speaking for the city's contribution, and it looks like, from what I understand, that it was itemized for, in lieu of, we understood what we're.
On the city side, right? So but if you're looking at the reporting that's being done at the P-bid side, you're not going to have that same thing, right? So it's just getting everything aligned and then looking through this and mirroring the annual report and having the annual report coming through timely at the budgetary times of the city, that will eliminate a lot of this, because if this comes early and you guys have questions or want to modify, that can always be done, and then you can meet the requirements of the assessor's office.
In your opinion, would an audit later on down the line be in order, or would this realignment be sufficient enough to get clarification?
So the council can request that the association hire an external audit. That's, again, they would hire the firm, they would pay for the cost, that would be something that, we would, the city would be a user of that, of that financial statement, so we'd be included in the distribution of that, but we would not be spearheading the audit. We can request it, and you can request it throughout the whole duration of the plan at any time.
Okay, so there's nothing in tonight's vote that would preclude anything for us having an accountability, which is what we're asking for, and it sounds like they're going to get in line with this, so.
Right, right. So once we can get the financial statements aligned, we get the annual report aligned with that financial information, and then the perspective mirrors what's happening on the financials on that side.
So I guess once we get that, then we can say whether or not we need an audit.
Yeah, but during the plan horizon, the city council has that option to request that the association hire an audit firm. It's not an inexpensive thing to them, so it's at their cost.
So it's something we can look at should the need arise?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Let me do this again. Any more questions or comments from council? This isn't inter-information item only tonight, so there's no action to be taken. Very excellent explanation and analysis. Appreciate it very much. Now we have a better idea of, and hopefully, now we can move forward and square away so that those numbers, those accounting systems will match. And to me, that's important, because the P-bid money is collected through the taxing power of the city, and so therefore, the public, we need to be able to be accountable to the public for how that money is being spent, and we'll know, it'll be all much better aligned when we get this fixed. So thank you, Mr. Kuhn, for the report. And thank you, Ms. Lewis, for requesting it. All right. We will close item eight, move to item nine, and another item concerning downtown P-bid, consideration of the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, LBDPBID, annual 2.5 increase. And for this, we go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susa Els.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So this item goes hand in hand with the item, item eight, that Brent just presented. So as you may recall, back on April 6th, the Los Banos City Council approved the P-bid annual report as submitted, but the direction given to staff with that motion was with the provision that the finance department provide a financial review, which just occurred, of the P-bid financials before the annual 2.5% assessment increase could be implemented. And then the item was to be brought back to the city council. So that is what staff is asking tonight, is after this review, we are asking that the city council would provide direction to staff regarding the annual 2.5% assessment increase as provided in the P-bid annual report, and it's also provided within the management district plan. And as Brent stated, because the assessment rolls are due, those assessments are due to the county tax assessor, staff is asking for direction tonight in order to make the tax rolls in time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any comment or question from council on this item? Okay, seeing none, before we move to the motion, we are just getting this financing and accounting squared away, and so I don't think it's necessary to hold back this increase. I don't have a problem approving it tonight, because we're in the process. 2.5% is not even going to keep up with inflation with the cost of operations. We'll have a better handle on it after we get all these accountings done, and so I have no problem approving this tonight. Chair Lentana motion. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to increase the annual, let's see, let's see how to word this, Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, annual 2.5% increase.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones and a second by Mayor Pretem Lambert, to approve the 2.5 increase to the Los Banos P-bid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for all the work that went into both those items. And thank you to the Downtown Association for all your hard work. All right. Another council member requests, number 11. 10. Oh, that's right, sorry. After nine comes 10. I was just talking about that, my granddaughter, okay. Consideration of selection of an executive search firm, this is not a city council request, to assist the city council in the recruitment of a new city manager. For this, we go to Human Resources Director Maloney and Acting City Manager Breezy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. At the last council meeting, direction was given to staff to schedule interviews at a future meeting. I reached out to the three firms, and only one person was available to attend in person. The other two would need to attend virtually or by Zoom, and the current council chamber's meeting technology does not allow for in-person and Zoom at the same time. It has to be all in-person or all on Zoom. And so I followed up. or all on Zoom. And so I followed up with them, again, those three firms, and they all preferred virtual as opposed to in-person, and they're all available the month of August, except for the dates of August 21st through the 24th. So last time we did this in April of 2021, the council did the interviews remotely because we were still doing the COVID protocols, and the interview process that you came up with was to interview each firm. They would be interviewed separately at a predetermined interview time, and each council member would send three questions for each firm, and the selection process was a ranking, where you would rank each firm, and the lowest vote would be the selected firm. So I just need some direction on how to proceed since the meeting technology, after checking with IT, doesn't allow for in-person and Zoom at the same time.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. Pleasure of the council. Mr. Jones?
Well, I think for the one that is available to come in, I think we should interview them in person, because I'm sure the public would like to hear what they have to say when it's remote. We don't have as many people attending the online meetings. If the other two absolutely cannot make it, that is disappointing, but then we could schedule for a later Zoom meeting on them.
He actually told me that you would prefer to be remote.
That who?
That that person who is going to be available tonight preferred attending remotely.
Which one was that?
It was the Merced.
It's a 45-minute drive. I'm sure they can come in if they want the job.
Okay, I'll check with him.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have been on this council longer than I have, and I've been through three interviews. We've never interviewed a headhunter organization in public. When our police and fire department, any other department head needs to hire a headhunter, it's never done at a public meeting. I think this is a stall tactic, and I would like to see our city clerk schedule three interviews via Zoom as quickly as possible so we can move forward with these interviews. This is, you know, once we interview the agencies, then we come back and tell the public who we decided on, but we never have done this in a public setting. And I don't know why this has been the request. And then for Councilmember Jones to say whoever wants to come in, you know, schedule them at a later date. We need to take care of this now and move forward with what the business of the city and what we need to do. So I would recommend that to the council and mayor that the city clerk engage in trying to get an interview set up with these three organizations as quickly as possible, and that we handle those, if available, on the same day.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones?
Yes, what I'd like to know, Ms. Lewis, is why do you want to hide this from the public, and why do you not want to be transparent?
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you have a misunderstanding about this, and as I said, we've never done this publicly, and it's not about hiding anything. It's about a stall tactic on your end. And so I'm saying to the public that we, they know, it's already been noticed of the three agencies that have agreed to come and be interviewed, of all the agencies that were notified, and there were three that agreed to be interviewed. We interview them in a session away from the public. It's not about, the public has no reason to ask questions of any of these agencies. It's all done by the council. So again, I'll say this one more time. We've never had a headhunter organization interviewed publicly by either council or by any other department head. It's always handled internally. I don't know what this push is to try to have something done publicly. This is just a matter of the city council doing its business, and then coming back and letting the public know what its decision was.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I'd like to hear, any other council members like to chime in? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to kind of disagree. I mean, here in this past month, we haven't been so transparent, and this is just a hiring agency. I feel, I mean, if this one lives in Merced, and he's able to come here to produce his pitch, I would welcome it, and I'm sure the public would welcome it. There's no questions that's going to be asked by the public. It's just going to be our questions, but at least we'll be transparent on at least one of them before we go behind closed, or before we go Zoom. What about the other two?
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Yamas?
Hang on just a minute, let me get you back on. Okay, no problem. Thank you. Well, a question I have is, again, I'm new to this, so I'll take direction from folks who've been doing it longer than I have, but the only thing that concerns me is, will these firms be willing to be interviewed in public? Is it something that they prefer not to do? Would they shy away from the process? Is that something that's normally done? Again, is this the norm, or are we venturing into unknown territory as far as interviewing them in public? Again, I don't know. It's not about hiding anything or anything like that. Again, is that something that's normal, and is it proper? And if it is, then I'd like to have it in public as well, but I'm just concerned that the firms may be releasing some proprietary information, or I don't know. Again, I'm just asking for information so that I can make a proper decision on this. But I'd like to echo what Mrs. Lewis says, is that I'd like to have this done sooner, as soon as possible, if we can get the technology so that we can do this, because I'm concerned with the interim city manager. He's on a very limited time. We actually have hours that are clicking my, and we don't want to surpass those hours. So that's something that we need to be aware of as well. So again, I'd like to have some clarification whether or not this is normal, is it appropriate, if it can be done, then the sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Vaughn?
Ms. Maloney, it was my understanding that the last Zoom interviews wasn't a public meeting.
It was done during COVID time. It was a Zoom meeting, and we let each firm in one at a time.
It was not a closed session. It was a...
I don't believe so, no.
It was an adjourned meeting.
Everybody on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
So it was a public meeting.
That answers it. And all three firms prefer to Zoom. They would rather not come in person. It works better with their schedules.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
So basically, what I'm hearing is that you guys would like to keep it status quo and keep the public out of it. Is that correct?
If you could clarify who you guys are?
The ones that are in favor for doing it the way that we've always done it. I mean, there's no policy that says that we can't have them come in, or at least the ones that are available to.
No. Now, Ms. Maloney, you said that the one company, the Merced firm, that would be able to come in, they would, the only time they couldn't come in was August 20th through 24th?
No, he was able to come into tonight's meeting.
Oh.
By going forward, he would, Zoom would work better for them, all three firms.
Okay.
Yeah, and there was one firm that, and they were unavailable August 21st through 24th, because they were going to be at a conference.
But that Merced firm said, they were able to come tonight, but would they be able to come to the August 17th meeting?
He preferred on Zoom.
Right.
When I followed up with him.
But even though he had that preference, would it still be possible?
I could check with him. I could check.
Because my, I kind of like the idea. If we get them in here in person, I like that. There's no reason that we couldn't have them in here in person for the August 17th. That's just two weeks. And then if we're satisfied with that, we can look at going with them. There's no law that says that we have to go with all three vendors, correct, Mr. Vaughn? We can choose who we want. Then if we say, well, we'd like to see more, then we could set up a Zoom with the other two, public meetings. So that's what my recommendation would be, is to go ahead and have that person come in, because we're not going to get them to get, I don't think we're going to get them, I mean, this is already, you know, we're already in the third, so the 17th, that's just two weeks. It's not too bad. Still in August, and still within the, I think, still in the timeframe of doing what we want to do. Counsel? If counsel's good with that, please, Ms. Yamas?
Yes, sir. No, I'm in favor of the folks coming in in person if they can. I'm surprised that they weren't here, because I think they initially said they were going to be here. But yeah, I think in person is always better. So, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If there is only one agency that wants to come in in person, and the council makes that decision on it, I understand, but if there are two other ones that only want to go by Zoom because of distance or whatever, then I think we need to set those up first and get them down and out of the way.
And get them what? Pardon me?
Get those interviews done first, and then whoever at the next meeting set up, if that's possible.
You can adjourn to a date certain, and I could set those interviews up.
I mean, it doesn't, we don't have to wait until the next council meeting. We can set it.
For any one of the, either the Zoom or the live. So we could look at a special council meeting next week?
Well, you could adjourn today's meeting to that date certain.
To a meeting next week, or we could have the in-person, and we could do the Zoom. We do the in-person in here, and then we'd have to, we'd have to go somewhere else with the Zoom, huh?
That would be complicated to do at the same meeting. You would have to do the Zoom meeting in one setting, and then do the in-person at two different...
Maybe the Zoom, maybe the in-person in the morning, and the Zoom in the afternoon?
Or on separate days?
On separate days.
It's your preference, what's your availability?
We figured it would take an hour, about an hour with each one, is that what we usually did in the past?
I think last time, we gave each firm 35 minutes, and they didn't take it all.
So we could do it all in one day. Then we booked one day, and we're fresh in our minds. I like to do, it's like when I'm interviewing people for positions and whatnot. If I could do it all in the same day, then all those different people are fresh in my mind. So we could do, we could schedule either the Zoom in the morning and live in the afternoon, or in the evening, or we could do, and that might be better. That might even work out better. Or we can do live in the morning, Zoom in the afternoon.
It depends on the availability of the council, if everybody's available during the day.
So is council available, see, or planning commission's on the tent, so that kind of, if we want to use a chamber in the afternoon, it's kind of a problem. So either the nights, you have the eighth, ninth, and eleventh, or the 12th, but I can't do the 12th.
I can't do next week. I'll be out of the area.
Okay, so...
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor? I'll ask this of our city attorney. If there are, if we have a majority to do the interviews, can we move forward?
Well, all your actions can be done by majority.
Okay. So I'm just suggesting that we try to schedule these interviews as quickly as possible, that our city clerk gets some dates, and if the majority of the council wants to have a live interview, to get a date here in the chamber as quickly as possible, and then if, you know, there are two of them that can't make it via that, a chamber meeting on, I don't know that we can pick a date cert right now. We need to find out if they're willing to do this, and then move forward. But the city clerk can always schedule a date and put out an agenda. So I don't know that we should agendize that tonight.
Okay. Mr. Jones, as you queue up there, just one more week, go one more week to make sure we have all five of us, I think. I think we should.
All I'm saying is that I don't want to sit here and just have week after week after week go by, and there's another excuse as to why we can't do these interviews. We need to move forward.
Mr. Jones, you are available the week of the 15th?
I will be available that week.
Okay. Counsel, is everyone available the week of the 15th? Okay, so let's go ahead and shoot.
I think, you know, I'd have to look at my calendar. I think on that Tuesday, the 16th, I have an appointment already scheduled.
Okay.
Just to clarify, it wouldn't be the 15th, it'd be after 15th, so the 16th, I'd be available. And then I have a busy week, so that would be it on the times.
Okay. So 16th, 17th, 18th, or 19th? Either one of those four days then would work if you...
19 is wide open for me.
Okay. So it sounds like, Ms. Maloney?
Time, timeframe, is there any time that doesn't work for city council?
Times, I was thinking 10 o'clock in the morning for the Zooms, and then any time in the afternoon for the live. Does that sound good for everyone?
It's fine.
So I'll reach out to the groups and then work with the mayor to call a special meeting?
I understand. Okay. So would you need, what day off is your restaurant day?
Mondays and Tuesdays.
Mondays and Tuesdays. So that... Mr. Jones, you said the Monday you're not available, but the 16th you are?
16th I would, unless you want to schedule for the 22nd, Monday the 22nd.
Okay, the 16th, the Tuesday, the 16th? Ms. Lewis, you had the Tuesday. You have a problem with that?
Yeah, I have the afternoon open.
Monday the 22nd.
Okay. The, if I can get it, I sure would like to get it in, well, we could put it on, if we're going to go to the 22nd, we could put it on a regular council agenda.
That's the time when some of them are not available.
Yes.
The 21st through the 24th.
That's right. So the week of the 15th, maybe it's best to just, Ms. Maloney, shoot.
Why don't we do it on the 17th at a regular council meeting, and maybe schedule the online ones for a couple hours earlier, and then we can come in. So we start at 4 o'clock. We have a half hour break to get down here, and then we can interview the in-person one at 6:00 PM.
The 17th work for you, Ms. Lewis, too?
Yes, but I still think we need to await and have our city clerk find out from these agencies when they're available.
Okay, so we're not going to be able to adjourn to a date certain here.
Okay.
But the direction will be, you'll coordinate through as we normally do, and then I'll call a special meeting, and we'll do that.
Unless the 17th works.
Pardon me?
Unless the 17th is the date that works.
Yes. All right. And we won't need a special in a sentence. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Now we move on to council member requests regarding an overview. Get these buttons. I wish I had my whole system back. Okay. Was much easier for council as well as chair. So now we're on to item 11, council member request regarding an overview of city insurances, and this came from council member Mayor Portem Lambert. And for this item, we go to interim finance director, Mr. Kuhn.
I have a lot of voice, but I...
I got you now.
Yeah. So we went through, finance went through all of the insurance that is owned by the city, and put them in no semblance of order, but just, the first two are the largest insurances of the city, and the first one is our main liability insurance, and that's what the Risk Management Authority is, or a member of this JPA. It's pooled for risk. It, basically, they're the administrator. We review the claims that come through, but they're administering all of it. You can see that the annual premium is about $2 million. All the premiums are based upon claims paid and unasserted claims, so it incorporates a position to handle claims that will be for the year, plus any that are there, assuming that could be asserted later, and that amount is kept in a cash position with the JPA, the Risk Management Authority. These are the, the coverages are stated in front of you, and the premiums are proved by council through the budget process. So that's our main liability policy. CalPERS is our main health insurance policy. The annual premium here is over $3 million. It includes current and retired employees. It also includes an actuarial for the city's unfunded healthcare liability. That fluctuates based upon an actuarial, and the contribution is baked into that. They vary... and the contribution is, is, is baked into that. They vary by employee, and again, the premium is approved through, by council through the budget process. Premier Access is a vision dental plan. The premium's $148,000. It's for current employees. The benefits vary by employees. The policy was originated from finance, Melinda Wall, back in 2010. The renewal process is approved by the city manager, and the premiums are approved by council through the budgetary process. The agency is Western Valley Insurance. The agent is Don Maloney. And the, on the face of the policy, there's a 2.5% commission for this product. Sun Life is, is our life insurance. The premium is roughly $40,000. It covers life and disability for, for current employees. Again, the benefits vary by employee. This policy also originated from finance, Melinda Wall, back in 2005. Has the same renewal approval process with the city manager, and the premiums are approved through the budgetary process. Insurance agency is Western Valley Insurance. The agent is Eric Adams, 15% commission on this product. This is a public officials management employee practices. So along with RMA, that has a $500, $500,000 per occurrence for certain employee practices. This is a employee practice liability that's, that's in excess of that. The annual premium of this is $70,000. It covers official for wrongful acts, employee practice liabilities, and public official crisis management. Now, crisis management is, is robust. In this one, it has $50,000 per defense, and $25,000 for crisis management. There's a $2 million per occurrence. Again, this policy was originated from finance. Sonia Williams, that was the finance director in 2018, it was approved by council through the budgetary process. The insurance, insurance agency is Western Valley. The agent is Thad Phillips, and this has an 8% commission product. This arose from an issue that took place back in 2018, and it continues in effect until the next budgetary year. This is a airport liability, general liability operators, so it's owners and operator, general liability, premiums $10,000. This is in addition to the city's pooled insurance. So RMA is, is, doesn't cover the municipal, like the hangars, the hangar keepers, the aircraft in there. This was an FAA requirement for grants that was in effect for, well, since 1999. This originated from Public Works in 99. This policy renewal is on a three-year basis and is approved by city manager. The policy premium is approved through, again, the budget process. The insurance agency is Western Valley. The agent is Don Maloney, and this has a 15% commission for this product. So in terms of how the competitive bidding process works, and first, I'll say that this information provides the city council with the basic, basic coverages, the cost attached to that. If, if they, if the council wishes to have any additional information, finance can produce that at your request. The municipal code exempts insurance as one of the expenditures that exempt from the formal bidding process. Therefore, the city has not undergone any RFP process for insurance-related services. The city manager is the purchasing agent of the city, and has the basic authorization for these types of expenditures. In fact, really all expenditures. And any expenditure that comes to city council for procurement has to flow through the city manager before city council can approve. Right now, and the, the city manager has, at their discretion, the ability to decentralize procurement. So the city doesn't utilize a centralized procurement office. So the, the department heads take care of the RFP process, and there's a coordination between the departments, whether it would be the, the engineering or building planning impact, and the financial impact that would happen with that. So in terms of that, there, there's some cohesiveness within the departments. At the end of the day, though, the RFP process goes through the city manager and then through council. So that's basically the overview of all of our insurance products. I am happy to answer any questions that you have, or any other information that you, you wish to have. We can go through after this meeting and, and produce that information if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. I imagine we want to go to Mr. Lambert first, who says item?
So I might have a, just a, this question's going to be actually just towards Ms. Melanie. And basically, what I would like to know is, do you have anyone in your immediate family own or partially own the Western Valley Insurance Company?
Okay, for, for now, that's all I have for right now.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
While we're on the question of ownership, does your father-in-law still own any part of it, Western Valley?
Mr. Vaughn?
I'm just trying to clarify this.
Well, I don't think she's required to answer them.
My father-in-law has been long retired.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. I'm not saying these policies are bad, or that were, that the city's being taken advantage of in any way on these policies. Some of them are probably pretty low because of the age. It does raise the question as, when the last time a city manager has actually just sought out and compared to see how we are in any of these policies with what some new policies might be. Sometimes older policies with insurance are hard to beat because there's just newer policies just come at a higher price tag. So it would be right for us to ask our interim city manager, when he has some time, to kind of go over this, because he's a big insurance guy, to just see if we are, one, maximizing our insurance, and making sure it's the most cost-effective. And again, some of these insurance policies, whether they have any relation to city employee or not, may still be some of the best policies that we have in place, and we may not be able to find a better policy. So it might just be good to get that cleared up and out of the way at some point here in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Yamas?
That was, my concerns with all of our questions is ensure that the city is well protected against liability. So, yeah, I would second that, to have the interim city manager review these policies, ensure that we are keeping pace with the, the proper liability coverages. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Yamas. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pose a question to council member Lambert and Jones as to why it was important to ask the question of Mrs. Melanie as to whether or not her father-in-law still owned the company. Why was that the primary question? I thought these policies were to be reviewed to see if we were in good standing, or whether or not we needed to raise our limits, or, or whatever. I don't know. But I, I'm very concerned as to why that had to be the primary question.
Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, so this whole last couple months, it's all about transparency. And I believe we just need to be a little bit more transparent on, I didn't know anything about these policies. I haven't been here long enough to go through the first, first way with the last city manager. So I wanted to be a little bit more transparent. So.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Ms. Lewis. When I went to his.
Thank you.
Ms. Lewis?
And I appreciate your answer, but that wasn't my question. My question was, why was the primary question regarding whether or not Mrs. Melanie's family still had any ownership in the country, in the company? That was your question to her. You didn't have any questions about the policy itself.
She, she answered, she answered it.
Excuse me?
She answered my question. I only had the one question.
Okay, Mr. Lambert?
I, I just, I think, you know, this council's heading down the wrong avenue to start putting people, our employees, on the block like this, to make them feel uncomfortable. There's been enough outrage by a portion of our community coming here. Not everybody in the city feels that way. But this, to me, is, this is unkosher, to, to ask an employee about their, their personal family business in public like this. And no, she didn't have to answer it, but she did. How would any of us like somebody to sit up here and ask us personal information about our finances and our business, and what our family owns or doesn't own? I think we need to stick to the business of what we're here to do, and stop pointing the finger at certain employees within our, within our city, and just get down to doing the business that we're, we're sent here to do. And I know that you two are out to do a certain thing here, and we're trying to conduct business, but you keep trying to bring up, you keep trying to kick up dirt around here. And, and I, I don't like it. I think it's horrible, and it's not a good testament to being a councilperson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Lewis, Mr. Jones?
Yes, Ms. Lewis, we definitely see who you're, who you're trying to protect here. So with all transparency, we needed to know, because this has not been addressed in many years. Now, with being a department head, or anybody in management, it would come a little bit of alarm if there was any persuasion whatsoever on any good or services that the city uses. I think we should know about it. It's one thing if it's a, maybe a public works employee, employee that is on the streets, maybe they might be married to somebody that works for a car dealership in town. That's not really too alarming, because they don't have really any strength or persuasion, but management does. So I think it is very relevant questions that we're asking. So, and again, I'm sure Lucy's reporting everything correctly. I'm not saying she's doing anything wrong in it. It's just we need to have it out there in the open. That's all.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Mr. Kuhn made it clear to us that the city manager is the one that signs off on all the insurance policies. And the, the process by which it comes to council is through the budgetary. And that's where we have approval level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so questions have been asked and answered. We'll close the item. Move to item 12, advisement of public notices. We have five reports. Community and economic development director, Ms. Souza Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. The first item is a tentative parcel map. This is to be located at 1725 West Pacheco Boulevard. And this is taking a 9.97 acre parcel and dividing it into two parcels. And this is to facilitate future development on the vacant piece of this existing commercial parcel. Second, public hearing is for a mobile food vendor. This is for Heidel Perez, doing business as El Gruense Hall, number seven. This would be located at 2220 East Pacheco Boulevard. This would be to complement Village Liquor and where Domino's Pizza is also located. The next public hearing would be for a mobile food vendor for Antimio Cortez. This had a previous mobile food vending unit that ceased operations, and the family is re, trying to recommence operations at 740 G Street. This Antimio Cortez Jr. would be doing business as Taco Mex. This was the former location of his father's truck, which was Junior's Tacos. The next item is a cottage food operation for 2575 Canvas Back Drive. The applicant is Claudia Gonzalez. This would be to operate out of her residence at Canvas Back Drive. And the last item is for a type 47 alcohol license. This is a conditional use permit. This would be for Jungle Gyms Adventure Lanes. This is the bowling alley located at 923 West Pacheco Boulevard. Currently, they're operating with a type 40, which is for beer only, on sale. And they're requesting an on-sale general alcohol license, which is an intensification of their current license. All five public hearings will be held on Wednesday, August 10th, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Souza Elms. Item 13, city manager report. Mr. Breezy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just one item to report tonight, and that is executive compensation for our community and economic development director, Stacy Souza Elms. On July 26, 2022, based upon an annual performance review, the community development director's salary was increased to $10,515 monthly, or $126,180 annually, retroactive back to February 1st. That is all I have to report. I want to say congratulations, and well deserved, Stacy.
Thank you, and I'll echo that. Item 14, report on Merced County Association of Governments, Measure V. In Merced County Association of Governments, working, and those are public meetings, or the third Thursday of every month, and you can follow those. Very important things go on there that people don't realize. All state and federal highway funds have to come through MCAG. Merced County Association of Governments is council of governments. So we are at the table, and have to be at the table. Our staff, our city manager, sits as part of the technical review board. They meet and do the, the details of, of the things that staff does, and then they bring it to the whole board. Couple of big things right now, they are, there is going through the re-upping of the JPA. That's the agreement by which all the cities and the county form that organization. And it has to be re-upped every 10 years. There was an extension because, for a few issues in 13. So we have until next year to complete that. They've sent it back to the cities, and we're reviewing it. You are welcome to go online at the MCAG Agenda Center, take a look at those agendas, take a look at those agreements. Their agendas are huge. They also handle regional waste management. And so on that, we had a little fire up at Billy Wright, got put out in a hurry. But we are moving forward, and as you can see in the, on, on one of the items in the consent agenda today, we have the amendment to professional services agreement with Mark Thomas for engineering services in the Pioneer Widening Project. So that is moving forward, trying to bring that stress off of Pacheco Boulevard, while still maintaining our sales tax revenue with having 152 go through town, and still giving our citizens a way around it more, more smoothly and more easily. Peninsula Clean Energy, there've been a lot of questions regarding people's bills. The bill looks a little different when you have Peninsula Clean Energy. The generation portion of the bill is the part of the bill that Peninsula Clean Energy gives a discount on. That's the part that they do. So that is consistently, and they, they work every, every month and review that, so that that is consistently 5% below PG&E's generation rate. Nothing else in the bill has changed. Nothing else in the bill's changed, just the way it's reported and the way it looks. So it has confused people. I want to let everyone know that with PCE, you are seeing a 5% discount in the rate of generation. They are a JPA as well, and they meet on the fourth Thursday of every month by Zoom. And you can actually log into those meetings and go to the PCE website, and there's public comment opportunity. So all kinds of opportunities, especially in the modern world with Zoom, for people to be chiming in, for our citizens, residents to be involved. All right. And that's it for me tonight on that. And at this point now, we'll go to our city council member reports. And first tonight is Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night, I attended Gusteins City Council meeting with the San Joaquin Air District to promote all of the incentives that are available to the public in regards to discounts on being able to purchase a vehicle, which is income qualified. There's money available for people who want to upgrade their fireplaces from wood burning to gas or electric. There are incentives out there for monies to convert from your gas yard care equipment to battery. They call it electric. So there's a lot of money out there to be used and to be garnered by anyone in the San Joaquin Valley. I missed the Police National Night Out, and I apologize for not being there, because I'm normally there. But this was scheduled months in advance. And we have another event coming up next month with the. And we have another event coming up next month with the city of Attwater. So I'm out there trying to help the airport promote as much as possible to the city officials to get the word out to the community about what monies, incentives, and incentives are available to them so that they can be helped to purchase new items or for people who need a new vehicle, to help them purchase a vehicle that's electric. So I, I think it's a great opportunity for people who are lacking in funds to be able to access these benefits that are out there in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a couple items. First, again, I'd like to congratulate retiring fire engineer Joshua Hotcomer. So thank you very much for your service to the city. And also to the Los Manos Little Leagues for their all-star rating, being champions. Yeah, last night was a wonderful event, a very good turnout, the Los Manos National Night Out. Lot of folks, good time, a lot of raffle items out there. So thank you for the police department for what they did. And we got the Community Resource Fair coming up on Friday. And also the Los Manos Chamber of Commerce is putting on the Tomato Festival. And that's a unique item that I think is unique to our area, unique to our city. So hopefully folks can go out there and, and bring the family out, spend a little bit of money because Los Manos Chamber of Commerce does a lot of good work to, to promote our businesses. So hopefully folks can go out there. Let's see. Regarding the homeless enclosure, yeah, you might say it's a very difficult situation, but there are some very serious concerns there with the folks that are having to deal with it in their front yard. So I think the city is working towards a better solution. I don't think there is an ideal solution out there, but we're working towards a better outcome for all involved. So I thank the police department, the interim city manager, and everyone involved with, with that process. And lastly, congratulations, Ms. Elms, for well deserved promotion. Thank you very much for your hard work. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Mr. Jones? Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kuhn, for the, actually several good reports that you had to put together this week, last week. Also, last night I did attend the taco night out and probably gained a pound or two on the tacos, but job well done, guys, commanders, chief. I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it the last time I was actually involved in it. I'm glad to see it back. Hope it just grows each year. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Congratulations once again, National Night Out. Thank you for the honor of allowing me to sing the National Anthem. It is the greatest honor anyone can bestow upon me, is allow me to do that. It was a beautiful event, all those families out there. Los Manos is a town of families and boy, do they appreciate when we do family things. Lots of family things coming up, Tomato Fest, 8:30 to 3:00 this Saturday downtown. And then movie night at College Greens Park, correct? This Saturday night? Yep. Movie night at College Greens Park. So come on out, bring the family and enjoy all the good stuff Los Manos has to offer. Finally, once again, congratulations, Ms. Elms. You've been doing this a while and doing a fine job of it. I'm very, it makes me very happy to say I, I taught you once. You were a very fine student and I, you serve your city beautifully. Thank you very much. With that, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Lewis?
So moved.
And Mr. Yamas?
Second, please.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, second by Mr. Yamas. Adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned at 8:07 PM. Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work.